This is our board of commissioners work session meeting Monday, April the eleventh. Let's uh let's do a roll call. Mr. Burris, Mr. Pope.
Present.
Mr. Lucas.
Present.
Mr. Barnett.
Present.
Cheers here.
Commissioner Burris said he'd be a few minutes late.
He did.
Yeah.
I'm gonna ask the chief if he would lead us in prayer before we start the meeting.
Just pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your goodness, your grace, and your mercy. Father, we thank you for this county. We thank you for what it means to each one of us. Now, Lord, we pray that everything that we say and do today will be pleasing to you in Christ. Now I pray. Amen.
Thank you. Let's pray to the Lord.
I pray to the Lord. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have any guest speakers?
I don't I didn't have anybody to sign uh sign up.
Okay. I had a couple of calls on, I guess it was about the uh mobile home sticker in the windows. I guess we could put it on as an item. They wanted me to mention it. And I think Scott's looked into that a little bit and he maybe can explain it a little more about what what he's found out.
Um, I'll I'll ask the county attorney. She just looked up the Senate bill to find out what it what it said from there.
And it may be best if we send it out to you all because um I I know there were a few different tax bills that came out. So I want to make sure it's the right one that you're wanting. Um but I believe it is Senate Bill one ninety-three that you were referencing right before the meeting. And it does address um the uh mobile home decals being in the window. So we can send out some information on that to the county commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else? Anybody got on the floor? If not, we're gonna go to the agenda items. We got a bid award for twenty twenty-two safety action plan road striping. That's under the bids were open on Wednesday, April the sixth, twenty twenty-one. L-Meg Safety Action Plan Stripping Project. Peak pavement marking was the apparent low bidder with a bid of two hundred and one thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars forty-six cents. And mid-state construction striping submitted a bid for the amount of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-three ninety. So uh these projects are funded by L-Meg. Brandon, do you explain that to us if we we awarded it to them? Are we going?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Uh we were contacted by the DOT that there was some additional funding available. They gave us a list of streets that were eligible for the for these projects.
Right.
Came up with this project list based on the street list we had and put it out to bid. And those are the apparent bid results. Uh the grant amount was two hundred thousand dollars. There's a ten percent match required. So there are some streets that might be added because bid under the our estimate of what it would cost. So there's gonna be some other ones that are gonna be picked up in addition to the match and everything that I gave y'all. Probably try to go back to that list to make sure it's in there.
So we could add some roads to it?
Yes, sir.
And to come up with a two twenty?
Make it be that.
Okay.
Two thousand dollar amount. You just have to deal with that DOT biz to be able to.
You know some, have you uh been asked about striping any roads that we don't have on the list? Do you know any or does Scott, do you know?
No, sir. The Needham Road is on there. They've asked me about that one before in the past. Uh it is on that list.
And I see you got the Jim Mixon Road on there and some of those down there that I've been asked about. Has anybody been asked about anymore and what's on the list that we could add?
Did you just say that you got the one that's not on there, Chairman?
No, not.
Are these roads that are that have to be on the DOT list if we're gonna add them?
Yes, sir.
I got it. Okay, I thought so.
That letter the DOT sent us last year.
Yeah.
Had that list of roads that were eligible for the funding. We cross-fosulated our needed shopping with their eligible funding and produced that list.
Yeah.
And we used to get that out. And I said if we wanna add any more to it, which we're gonna add to.
Right.
To spend the total amount, which we're sure we got that ten percent match in there. And then just come off of that originally this. That the DOT gave us.
So that's the case.
So the state's gonna pay two hundred thousand on it?
Yes, sir. Two hundred thousand on our grant.
Yeah, we like to come up with ten percent.
Ten percent, yes, sir.
That's a good deal. Makes it two twenty. So we need to we need to increase those roads a little bit. Is the swamp road, is it is it on there? Or does it need to make, has anybody called you back?
Yeah.
I know they already said about that.
It needs paving, man. This is just.
It needs widening and paving.
This is just for the striping.
Yeah.
But I mean, uh.
But yeah, it needs it all, though.
We need to do that.
There's some deep patching that needs to be done on it.
Yes, sir.
Well, it's not heavily traveled like some roads are. It just, it ain't like terrible roads. The U.
That upper portion of it, there's a lot of houses right out there to uh to uh. What's the name of that island?
First couple of miles is out there.
There, back in the town.
Yeah.
I can look at the uh.
Yeah, could we put it on? If it's not on there, we could put the first probably couple of miles of it or something.
Yes, sir.
We're talking about striping now?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, striping.
Unfortunately, I know.
We can't widen it yet. Ain't got no money.
Uh you know, we did that, we did some of the swamp road in Swanee Chapel, was part of the project about.
Couple of years ago.
Which I did a good little improvement on. So it ought to be a pretty good shade striping line. It doesn't resurface.
Yeah, they all need to be resurfaced. The Needham Road is supposed to bend and resurface. They they did half of it, you know, it stopped. And then the other half, where is the other part of it, the Needham Road? Is it?
It's this this striping project stops where that resurfacing stopped.
Yeah.
And goes all the way back around to come back through town, a mile post road.
Yeah.
The other one's on there. Little Gilmore Street.
Yeah, but the resurfacing on it is supposed to be done too, isn't it? And that Needham Road, they did half of it and then they stopped.
Well, that was the damage, you know, caused by that pit they had there. They dug all the dirt out.
Yeah, but that was on the other end that was already, that had been resurfaced and it got tore up.
Yeah, it was after, yeah, right after it got resurfaced.
The other end though, it's never been resurfaced, eh? Yeah.
Be good, go the swamp, Father.
Right, yeah. Okay. Uh we we just have to come up with some, I guess, ones that we need to do.
Yes, sir. Uh I think Gene would always start taking a look at that to see what, you know, the higher ones up on there probably is, along with the lower probably is. Y'all have any rec- recommendations for this note?
All right. Okay, we'll carry that out and move it into the.
Probably uh where Blackshear meets Augusta, where they just went in there and resurfaced part of that right there from our old heritage center. That probably needs some strapping done in there.
Some of the deep patching. That's on the uh the one they're working through now, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
That if they do that deep patching and do that striping part.
You've got a lot of them listed there, the ones that you're gonna do. Oakview. Camp Brink, Jim Mixon, all of those are on the list, I think.
Yes, sir. Does that include the maps, Sheriff?
Simmons Drive.
Yep.
Thermo. Dixie Engine Road, okay. If y'all got any that need to add to it, think about it. We'll carry it over to the meeting.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Brandon. Okay. The got a bid award for the R.C. Davis and the Auburn Road area paving project.
Brandon, can you speak to this one too?
Brandon, yes, come and explain it, how that went on that.
Uh yes, sir. Chairman, that was a a painting project we're gonna do this part of the farm. On Auburn Road, R.C. Davis and some other roads in that area. Getting a lot of calls about the complaints, uh bad weather, things like that out there. So we were hoping to get those paid. We applied for them through the L-Meg funds to try to help finance that. And it was approved. So we we uh far enough along in the condemnation process to go ahead and bid it out and uh avoid it. So there's the good results from that. I think the local construction is a fantastic bidder.
What's the uh completion date on those projects?
I think it was two hundred and seventy days.
Two seventy?
Yes, sir.
What was on Smith Road? Is it about a year?
High, I have to go back and look. Probably probably something like that.
A year, okay.
Um that would be for notice to proceed, which I wouldn't be able to go through the.
Right.
Bid, the law on execution and contract execution and all that.
Okay.
And this is under the estimate from engineers about?
Yes, sir. I think it was around one point two million in the engineer investment.
The the actual number is like three hundred and five thousand dollars.
Under the estimate, yeah.
Yeah. Think about one point two or something like that.
That's good. Yeah. Okay. So anything else to mention?
That, okay, that's just uh those two roads, R.C. Davis and Auburn Road.
Yes, sir.
Because I noticed over here it's talking about.
Couple other roads in that list.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at here. And uh I know just on the bid award, it said R.C. Davis and Auburn Road area paving project.
Area that encompass those two. Those are the two longest roads, the Osborne Road to that entire area.
Pleasant Acres Road and Pine Lane.
Yes, sir. Osborne Road, Osborne Lane, Pleasant Acres.
Marsh Road.
Marsh and R.C. Davis.
We put it in one package to get a better quote.
Yes, sir.
And it's 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 all the dirt streets in that area.
Okay.
There was that little that subdivision area.
That's one point eight miles, I believe it was like that.
Yes, sir.
One point eight, okay.
Brandon, do you know if there's any conflicts out there with water? I forgot the name of it.
I think there were a few uh conflicts that wanted to be resolved with water. And there's a manhole that's wanting to be breached. See Waycross. And the uh some power pole relocation is gonna be necessary. There's gonna be some utility coordination that has to go on, like all the other.
Yeah.
Different projects.
So this is this the road that's right beside uh Robert Rawson?
Yeah, that's right.
Cause like you mentioned about having to raise a manhole for the city, you said?
Yes, sir. That's on that.
Okay, right on.
Mars.
You're you're thinking of R.C. Davis goes, no, that's that's Osborne. Osborne goes between the two dealerships.
Right, what I'm saying.
And then just south of there is R.C. Davis, but north of there is Morris Road, one up by um Carcon Bar. That's Morris.
That's where the manhole is.
That's where the manhole.
So the city will be responsible for raising that up uh, how did that work?
I don't know. We probably just gonna try to.
It was in the bid, huh?
Do it into.
Yeah.
Okay.
Expedite.
Right.
Process.
Okay.
Okay. Any more questions on it? Okay, Brandon, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now, let's go to the next. We'll carry that over to the meeting. Yeah, the financial sponsorship for the twenty twenty-two Fourth of July fireworks celebration.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I've received this email of the city of Waycross is soliciting uh sponsorships for the Fourth of July uh fireworks celebration. And I think I've had two or three commissioners just mentioned, put this on the agenda for just discussion.
Okay.
And I included the flyer in in your agenda packet so you can see what their what their different categories are.
They asking for some sponsors for their assist in the cost of the purchasing of the fireworks?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I was one of the commissioner calling about it and uh, you know, I know putting back on my city commission I have during the time when I was on city council, the county always participated, you know, in trying to help offset some of the costs because it is a community-wide effort, you know. I mean, city and the county residents and people from out of town. And uh so I thought it would be something good if we can get the funding to try to help to offset some of the costs because those fireworks are expensive. And it's something that I think the whole community enjoys and I would hope that we as a commission could help, you know, offset some of this cost with the fireworks.
I'd like to bring up, um before we, before the um epidemic whatever we had closed things down, we um, Mr. Moy and Jonathan, who does the fireworks, who did the fireworks, came up with a plan to join with the city to have triple the fireworks at Trembling Earth. Tournaments, baseball, football, basketball tournaments all day. The slides that the police department has in their, when in their celebration, you jump on the slides and food trucks, all kind of stuff. Um I would like to see plans for next year to do that. The city was not interested in going in with us at the time, but hopefully things would change for next year to give Jonathan and Scott plenty of time to plan. Cause Scott had a number of corporate sponsors already ready lined up to pay for. So that's an opportunity for next, it's too late now, but next year, that's what we should look at. That's my recommendation. Maybe the city have a change of heart and wanna do it all for the for everybody.
Yeah, and I think you and I, we discussed that and uh I guess the only issue I have with that is the proximity of people being able to really participate in it. Because right now it's been at the stadium for as long as I can remember. And uh accessibility, I know it's maybe more land space out there, but I think the accessibility and uh what people will really be able to walk up to view the fireworks and hopefully maybe what you're talking about. And I think there's great ideas about having, you know, the slides and all that, but maybe something that we could incorporate out there at the stadium some type of way, you know, to have the same thing, but you know, have it within that in the in the city, I would say, instead of out at Trembling Earth. Because like I say again, the proximity of uh people trying to get to it, back into it, I think that would present a challenge to a lot of people to try to go out there.
I think the fireworks are limited because of the room, isn't it, Dee? I mean, is there, aren't fireworks out of room to have anything more, right?
Yes, sir. You only can, you only can, with the school system, we only have the use of certain.
Right, right. That was a big idea to have a bunch more fireworks. But anyway, something we can think about.
Yeah, what they, they want us to participate in it to.
Financially. I think I I can't remember how it was, but I think at one time it was like, what, fifty fifty? Maybe Dee may remember when the city years ago would, uh the county would go fifty fifty or because that was.
Years ago, it used to be fifty fifty when it opened the city.
Right.
The city and county was good, but that's been a long time ago.
And I think since that time, they've had other people that come in, the sponsors to kind of offset the cost. So I guess we need to just try to find out from them, uh Scott, or whoever, how that, as to how much participation they would like us to do, you know.
You know how much it normally costs to put this thing on? What's the cost?
I don't know what the current charge is, but I know a long time ago, it was in another location, we were spending.
Fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand.
Yeah, we were spending eighteen thousand in another, where I was before, but I don't, do you know what this, what their current current amount is? Twenty-five?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand, no?
Yeah, that's.
I said I quit school because I had recess and I don't like. Care my fur that.
But I I think something that the community really looks forward to every year, you know, and it's a big drawing card. A lot of people come to it and.
Yeah.
Uh they do a good job with it also.
Okay. Let's carry it over to the meeting, I guess, anybody else?
Is that what they want?
Yeah, there's there's.
Right here, here's the amount right here. Fifteen hundred thousand, seven fifty and five hundred.
Oh, yeah.
How much can we afford, County Manager?
Yeah.
Um well, we didn't budget for this line item, but typically what most local governments do is just take it out of their recreation budget and do it in that fashion. But I mean, whatever the commission decides, I'm sure I can find that amount. You know, there's, it's really not, each one of those is really not a lot of money, you know.
So do you think you could, you could check with uh, I guess who was over that at the city to find out exactly what are they asking the county to try to contribute to it?
I can check.
Like I said, they got other sponsors to offset some of the costs, so it may not be as much as as it used to be, the fifty fifty.
Right.
Okay. Any more on it? Anybody else get any ideas? So we just gonna table it till you can find out?
Yeah, I can put it on the next agenda. Yes, sir, and I can find out that information for you.
Okay, you want me to just table that one then? Okay.
Or maybe, well, I don't know, one that maybe between that and the meeting could be found out.
I could, yeah, I could, that's a good idea. I could do that.
Yeah, carry it over, but you can find out in between this time.
We just carried over to the meeting. We might just go ahead and.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, anything, County Manager got more experience than this than I do. That's evident, but any money that's left over in excess of what they need to pay for, they would hold in that account till next year. You know, so if we decide to go ahead and do the thousand or fifteen hundred dollar one, if there's any left, they'll hold it for next year.
Yeah. Okay. All right, we'll carry it over to the meeting. I see Mr. Roger back here now. I want to ask him if he's, would he update us on that sticker? It was, I don't know if you heard about it, Roger, we was, you was here in the beginning. Will you explain it to us if you know anything about it?
So Senate Bill one ninety-three, that was actually introduced by Senator Leagins, who was over in Brunswick, who's no longer there. It asked, it is an optional, it's a county optional deal. It gives the county option to have the stickers or not have the stickers. There was another bill for this year that's tied up with it, and that's why nothing else has been brought up, the others, I haven't brought your attention. The one thing that I would tell you that I'm in favor of is the homestead stickers going away. And the reason why is the people who have their their place as homestead, they live in, that's their house. And they give up their tiles. They have to, they have to link us the tiles to them. So they should be no different than somebody living, than us living in our river houses. They have to show a sticker. Now, the pre-bills, I fully one hundred percent believe they need to have stickers for tracking, for across the season months. So that's, that's all it is to it. But I still get that you guys could decide that.
Are you standing enforcing the stickers?
We try. It's 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 hard to get a deputy, one that'll be there on on the weekends. But that's, that's the whole bottom line. You know, and there's no, it's out of order. So a call we received was uh, Russell Lee, he called and was wanting, he said, yeah, well, if this is the case, I'm gonna come back and get money. But there's no money, it's gonna be nothing. State law requires a sticker. That's, that was enforcement. Now, it's, they made an optional for the county if you decide to 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 make them have that. So that's gonna be up to you, but it's not our cost.
So that's stickers on mobile homes?
Yeah.
So right now, they passed law where you don't have to have it?
Not whether they pass a law, it's county options. It's gonna be to you guys.
Yeah.
Each county's decision. Some will enforce it, some say, you know, you gotta have, you gotta have them on on everything. Some say you don't have to have them, some will, you gotta, you have this one and not on that one. But I hundred percent believe the homestead properties, they, I don't, I don't think they should have stickers, have the stickers on front of their houses. Because they're, they're gonna live there. They're not. Yeah, that's our home. They had, like I said, they had rooms to buy. So they don't have tiles, so they can't turn around and sell it without a tile on it.
How much those stickers? How much stickers you'd run on a mobile home?
For cost for me.
Well, yeah.
For them.
Yeah.
Probably.
It's part of their tax. It's part of their tax. I mean, it's a cost to us.
See, like it used to be about a dollar a people.
Yeah, it's a little bit, I think it's a little bit more, I know.
So we're not talking about a lot of money.
What do you, what do you? No, it's not, no, it's it's not, no money for, no, no money for the uh taxes.
Sticker.
That's part of, that's part of their taxes.
That's, that's just the show proof that they pay.
You give them the, you give them a sticker.
Is there an additional cost for the sticker?
There's an additional cost for us.
It is?
Yes, for us.
Well, the county be saving money, then not messing with the sticker, just let them pay the taxes and.
Yeah, but yes and no because when you deal with pre-bills, and he can tell you that, a pre-bill of a homes is the hardest thing to enforce.
Pre-bill.
Pre-bill, I would pick it up, Pierce King. Yeah, but he can't move it without a permit no more.
Some people don't get a permit.
He won't put it in nowhere and put out. He ain't gonna put it back in?
Mr. Tax Mission, what?
James knows better than I.
Well, I mean, I recommend that if if y'all decide to take a look at it, I recommend the homestead stickers can go away.
Can go away.
The pre-bill, which is the ones that are due, those are mobile homes, like, say you got rental property, they're renting their rental. The pre-bill, which is the ones that are due, those are mobile homes, like, say you got rental property, they're rental properties, that, those have stickers because those are, can be moved, they have the titles, they have everything, those have a hook up and they can roll. And it only takes, we're saying the wise, to hook a three fifty on to it and you can drag it right on down or whatever.
How about these people that move these campers on these sites? They just move, they just move right in the woods and settle there in the woods.
With, with the.
They don't have no stickers.
Campers and stuff like that. I'm not sure what the ordinances are in our county. But a camper, a trailer, RV, all that stuff, those are taxed different. Those are taxed, mobile, mobile homes, they got, have loan taxes each year. Um, the one issues that there are, there's, you'll find some that's got, like their fifth wheels set up out in the woods, nice little campsite and all, and they don't have a valid tag on it, they're not paying the taxes on it, and now they're moving back and forth. But sometimes they'll leave it right there, they're not paying taxes on that, and not getting property tax on it, they just get away with it. And like I said, I don't know what the orders are in our county concerning the live, way, if you can actually live in a camper or a mobile, you know, or something like that on property. And I've seen different county, counties have different ordinances concerning that, so I'm, I'm not sure about that. That would be a question for.
Yeah, I don't mind that.
For, uh, James.
There's quite a bit of that in where Ken, there's more and more, this seems to be multiplying.
We got a lot of it.
That's the deal with, with Senate Bill one ninety-three.
Is it, is a sticker for the homestead different from the other stickers?
Yes, they're different size, different sign, everything.
Yes.
You'll see, the, the homestead is usually run about a three by three and have an AT with a circle on it, and have a number on it. Where the pre-bills are built, four by four, five by five, different colors. And that's why especially when we're front, some people like it, or when you're some pretty long time, some don't.
About raw particles?
Well, all these are saying you had to display.
So, Rick can be up to us then, whether we want to keep the sticker or not to keep it there, okay?
And I recommend, my recommendation is we go with exactly what Mr. Commissioner himself said, that he likes Mr. Tax Commissioner, the way he worded it. Because of the keeping up with it deal, because he's gonna, it's his office has to keep up with all this stuff. So, I think we should go with his verbiage and his words, what he wants to do.
Keep the home.
I'll agree with that. Follow Roger's recommendation.
Do away with the homestead stickers, keep the regular.
Do away with, yeah, I, I agree with that, do away with the homestead on, on that one, but I think I'd do away with all the stickers. You paid the taxes.
All right. Can you word that for us so we can put it at the next meeting, the way you just worded it? Oh, we got it on record, I'm sorry.
Do away with homestead sticker and keep the regular.
Yeah, like I said, for, for a pre-bill, it gets tracked a bit, um, easily moved, it's, it's easy to track. I mean, we, we've been out, we've sent deputies out, you've sent people out, and they'll say, well, mobile homes here, well, that, oh, I paid for my street, the words of that, it wasn't in the house somewhere, it's not there, they paid for it. They got it, yeah.
Most of the time you have a title and all to it, mobile home, you have a title and everything.
You do, you, you have mobile homes, with the exception of the homestead, you have to give those up. You have more quarter dealing with your park report, and those titles are not gone. That's, that's a permanent residence.
Yeah.
So, this, this is no different than, than a stick bill house, whatever Rick wanted.
All right. Okay.
I got it.
So, he's gonna bring back to the next meeting?
Hmm, okay.
Right on, which way we wanna do it?
Okay.
Okay. Let's carry it over to the meeting then. Okay, is Commissioner got any items? Need to go get anything?
I've got, I've got one thing. A gentleman, and I'm sorry, my apologies to County Manager for not sending it over to him. Uh, this is at twenty-three oh six Manchester Street. So, Mr. Hamilton has asked that. I went, I rode down the road, went and looked at the way he was talking about, and one of the ditches down there is blocked. One of the cul-de-sacs, or not the cul-de-sacs, but the pipes, needs to be cleaned out, like three houses down. But in front of his house, he's got a big tree, it was like a pear tree or something, some kind of fruit tree, but it's a huge tree. But all the vines and all the roots are showing. So, he asked that we come in and put pipes and connect it and cover it up and told him I didn't think we could do all that, but that's up to him, it's his property, that tree's on his property. But I do think we can get down there and clean out the pipe that needs to be cleaned out. And the second thing he said in his email was, and we all battled this on Linden Street at Sunnyside, wanna know if that road can be widened. And I just don't see how it can be widened. You know, where the sharp curve is on Linden, Sunnyside goes straight up to Tebow?
Yeah.
He wants that widened through there because of the, the curve being so sharp and it only.
Is that a gentleman that had the mailbox that kept getting hit?
No, sir, no, sir, not this gentleman.
Oh, another, okay. Well, I know that gentleman that lives there on the corner, kept getting his mailbox run over.
Right, that's him, this guy's different.
Okay.
I guess he travels that way all the time, and he's had some close calls with people coming around that corner, but told him I would check into it, but I just, at this time, don't see how we can widen that road. But that's not.
Yeah, there was plans some years ago about widening that where, um, I think, what is that, where you go around off of Linden and widen that out? Make it a little bit wider, especially there on, uh, Blackshire.
Right.
Because that, that road is very, very narrow. Along, and you got ditches on both sides too, so if you, you, if you come off the pavement any, you're in the ditch.
You're in the ditch, yeah.
Scott, how are we coming with our lost tanks and our splosts?
Uh, we need to still, um, appoint a committee, um, to serve on both committees. Um, right offhand, the, the lost, I did hear from the city, um, interim city manager, and he said that they're ready to get started whenever we are. Uh, and they are, um, said that they would have the, uh, the mayor, the city manager, the finance director, and one city commissioner on that committee to work on the lost negotiations. So, I would, I would think we would start sometime the first of next month. Um, so, the county would need to appoint a committee. They just using, I think they're putting their mayor and one commissioner on there, so as far as that concerned. Usually, our committee is made up of, uh, three staff members normally and two commissioners, two county commissioners. And then also two on the splosts. Uh, with that, we'll have a mandatory meeting with the city, uh, to negotiate the, the, the percentage split, and then once we start, that the committee, the county committee would work on the budget on how we would propose to spend those funds from the county side.
So, we gotta come up with our committee here?
Yes, sir. So, we would need, uh, two commissioners to, to serve on that.
Well, I'll make a motion. I'm new here, huh? I can't?
Can't make a motion in this part, you can't in the other. You can make recommendations now to carry it over to the next meeting.
Well, I'll make, I'm new here, I've only been here three months, everybody knows that, so I'm definitely not gonna recommend myself. I recommend Mr. Barnard and Mr. Pope for that committee, is my recommendation, cause, uh, I think they've been on this commission the longest. And I, I believe, Mr. County Manager, you'd be on there as well, right?
Yes, normally I am, yes, sir.
And also, uh, the finance Beverly?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think that's a good recommendation. Like I say, he's two seasoned veterans up here.
Right. I think that's what we need to go with, cause.
Okay. Any more? How many, how many members do we need to, we need to point some from the outside too, we, we have to have?
No, sir, typically it's the com, the county commission representation and, uh, two to three staff members with the county. That's usually the, the ones. And then whatever comes from that committee comes back to the full commission to discuss it and eventually approve it by vote and so forth. So, it's just to get in there and, and start trying to, to, uh, narrow down the projects and the amount and those kind of things.
Okay.
Now, what I understand, the, the percentage is now sixty-two thirty-eight, right? Did I remember that correctly?
Yes, sir, based on the new population.
And that's the updated population, right?
Yeah, that's twenty-twenty census.
Yeah, I think that's what we need to stay with too.
What's the difference? You know the difference right now, Scott, with, and the census as far as what it was ten years ago?
Uh.
Just roughed at ballpark, and I mean, I think we lost a little bit of population.
Yes, sir, I think at one time, I think the lost was around fifty-five, forty-five.
Right.
At one time, that's been years ago.
Yeah.
Um, but I believe the last little while, it's been around sixty, forty, and I think that's how we split the splosts last time. Not, yeah, the splosts last time, sixty-one population, how much population did it lose? Uh, they say over countywide, we lost sixty-one total.
Sixty-one?
Total, that's throughout the whole county, city and county, city and county included, total sixty-one.
People?
Which is hard to believe.
So, all things being equal, we're pretty much right at the same, as far as population.
Yes.
As we were ten years ago. So, like I said, I don't understand the reason unless something happens in the, uh, deliberation to have the split would pretty much be the same thing.
Yes, sir, that's true. But you know, also too, um, you know, the daytime population is what, where we get our burden on our services. And that's not just certain days, that's not Monday through Friday, that's Monday, you know, from Sunday all the way to Saturday. And so, the daytime population is what you really have to think about. Now, you've got all these, that's where the sales tax is such a benefit, is because you're, the folks who are coming in, using our services, roads, you know, public safety, EMS, all the others, you're having to pay for that. And that's where the sales tax is such a huge benefit, cause you have that sales tax coming in to help you provide that service to people who don't even live here.
Right.
You know, so, that's, that's usually how we see it.
And I think it would be fair to say that the biggest of the sales taxes generated within the incorporated area of this kind, which is the city of Wake Cross.
That's right, yes, sir.
Yeah. I think the city of Wake Cross should stay up there too, instead of cutting them back to thirty-eight.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm, I'm not for cutting them back.
Yeah, no, I, I'm saying, you know that.
I'd say forty-five, fifty-five, but I may go, everybody kind of, they do business in Wake Cross, Georgia, they don't do business anywhere in county.
Right.
They do business in the city of Wake Cross.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's where the biggest of the sales taxes generated, and as Scott alluded to, the amount of sales types, basically that comes into the city and the county, is really coming in from outside this community. A big percentage of it, maybe forty-five percent of it.
Yeah.
So, it's not like, you know, we handling four hundred percent. We got people that's coming in and shopping here, to spending money, and eating and staying in a hotel, and all this kind of stuff that.
We wearing out their streets and, and expecting them to build them back.
Yeah, and the thing is, we, a lot of this money is generated outside this community, so I think, I think they were to have the, the Wake Cross.
Just for, um, note that, I looked at the, the population for the city of Wake Crosses versus Wake County individually, and from two thousand ten, two thousand twenty, the city lost, uh, it was gonna be, I think, over six hundred people. And then there's the county hall, we only lost, county city hall, we lost sixty-one, so actually, if you break it down, the city lost in the current game, uh, population, so.
More people moving out to the county.
So, that's more services we have to provide. And not to mention, you know, we're talking about city and county split here, being county government, city government. Yeah, most of the people come to this city, county, they come in on county roads, they do eat in the city, they do spend a majority of their money in the city. But EMS is provided solely by the county, nine-one-one dispatch is provided solely by the county. And, you know, the city does provide their fire, they do provide their police officers, they do provide a couple of other things, but county also does that too. And as y'all know, the county can respond to anything in the city, but the city's not gonna respond to the county unless mutual aid's called for. So, as far as, you know, making it fifty-fifty, I'd, I'd vote, I'd, right now, I just wouldn't do that, no way.
No, I, I, I don't.
No way.
No, not on, not on.
Forty-five, fifty-five. You'll do business in the city of Wake Cross.
I mean, plus, you know, I mean, uh, the, to me, the biggest burden is the jail. That's where a bulk of the money goes. And everybody that's arrested in the city is housed in the county. And that comes out of our budget. It'll come out of the city's budget, it comes out of our budget.
Well, you know, just to piggyback on what Tim, Mr. Lucas is saying there, I mean, when you start talking about different function that the county is responsible for, it's just a legion of things, you know?
Yeah.
We have department for courthouse.
Right.
So, you know, it's not apple to apple, I mean, cause county is responsible for a lot of things, and this is a big county.
Yeah.
And, uh, so, this is why it's so necessary to have these committees to get together and hash these things out, you know? Because it's not as simple as, okay, you all generate the sales tax, that may be true, but we also having to, have a lot of spending to it also.
Okay, anymore?
That's it. All I got. Jerry, you got anything on it?
All right, County Manager, you got any items?
Um, no, sir, only thing I needed to mention was thing on the salt, the lost and the splosts, the committee, that's it.
Committee, okay.
Mr. Brandon, you got anything? Mr. Engineer? Chief? Chief? Mr. Tax Commissioner?
Yeah, I have one thing about your loss. If I'm not mistaken, um, the split is fifty-five and a half, the forty-four and a half. And when y'all go to do your negotiations, let me give each one, whoever's on their, uh, the committee, their own tax bills and some of the France tax bills. Because that's the way that, I had to, had to do the last negotiation when they had to go back and redo it. You know, the last minute thing where they almost, like, the, the loss was almost gone, and everybody's taxes were weighed sky high. Because just, just for people who don't understand, the loss is actually the local option, sales tax, rolls back property taxes, and that's all it's for. So, that's where, that's where if you look at your taxes, you'll see the rollback, sales tax rollback. Here in the city, you'll say, city sales tax rollback, and then sales tax rollback for the county. That's the money coming off of it from that one, one penny that is spent on sales tax on the loss.
Okay. Anything else?
I got one thing. Uh, Scott, we, me and Commissioner Pope was riding around while we go out, Emerson Park was over in New York Street. There's a bunch of street signs, still got the old stuff on it. I thought we done everything in the donor area.
Uh, we were, we're doing them in phases, and the Brandon and I was talking about that earlier. Were you able to find out anything about that area?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, we had originally intended to make it all the way around. We had two phases. We started on, uh, Emerson Park was gonna be the next phase, and, uh, we'll, we'll get on that directly, try to get a big package out and start, start up there with Emerson Park. And the intention was to go all the way around the loop, um, to, you know, four or five phases of sign, uh, Emerson Park has not been completed.
So, it just got there yet?
Yes. It's a pretty big undertaking to draw those maps up and then coordinate the contractor's work and plan everything out for them with all the different signs that are involved with that. So, uh, that's, that is the next phase we intend to go to, is there in support.
I think they usually bring in two crews to do that, is that right? Do I remember that correctly? Seems like they did, somebody to come pick them up so forth. But we, we were usually, I think it was around sixty thousand we were spending for each phase, something like that, if I remember it correctly. So, we're rounding there.
Yeah, they, I don't think they paid very much attention to maps the first time, and they had everything about alphabet and over, so they were running back and forth. Um, in that area, and not proving anything, you know, things and everything out, so I think, uh, try to do a better job in the second phase. There's the thing, you, you figure out that you do a project, start a process, what you can do to improve things you go on, maybe improvements, so by the time you get finished, we know how to do it.
By the time we get finished, you know how to do it.
That's how that works.
Okay.
But there's lots of streets that we don't even have no kind of signs on, period.
Well, I've noticed in some of the areas that we did north, that you, we have those signs put up, and stop signs go missing, street signs go missing. Um, and it's just all over. I mean, it's, there was one quite a while back, it was a dangerous intersection, and the stop sign was removed, pulled out of the ground.
I was glad to find out that we had not done that wrong, that portion of the county did. I was glad to find out that we had not done that project, that portion of the council did, after we made the replacements, because I was a great. Spent a lot of money, you know?
Didn't get.
They got it and got gone.
So, how are we coming on the, uh, the Jamestown project out there?
We, uh, got the results back from the Title Abstracts. I've got an email today from the attorney's office, so they have been able to look and do the research to find out who the current property owners are. So, you can start the, uh, letter writing campaigns to those property owners, to inform them of the project. Determine the, you know, they would be willing to donate their property, or if they wanna require it. Be compensated, market value, so, I think they usually give them thirty days to respond to the initial letter. And then they'll give them a fifteen day follow-up letter, and after we've not heard from them in a certain amount of time. We start the condemnation process, I think is how they do this.
It depends, each county does it differently as far as personal contact after the letters, but that generally has been our. Plan of action, there's not a set statutory amount of time that has to be given, as far as I'm aware.
So, they do have the option of selling the property, I mean, they can come to agreement, the property owner with the county?
Yes, sir, they're given the, they're informed of their.
What we do, said that it'll be uniform, is we get an appraisal, and so one appraiser is appraising all of that property, and that way it's fair to everyone. So, you don't have, you know, one person getting paid, uh, more, so there, there are appraisals, and then eventually. That appraiser is the one that's, if, you know, hopefully, you're able to resolve it, right? And so then, you get the project accomplished, but if you're not able to, and condemnation's necessary. Then that appraisal also serves as the evidence that you present in court, um, that supports what the county's, um. View of the fair market of value of the property is, cause that's what, um, the law says, is that, you know, they should be paid the fair market value of the property.
So, this is, and the last resort would be like, I am in the domain?
That's right, that is the last resort, certainly.
How many property owners are affected? I can't remember, it's been so long.
There's three property owners.
It's not many, is it?
Yes, sir, five parcels.
Five parcels and three property owners?
So, let me ask this, Madam Attorney, so, you mentioned about the, uh, appraiser, so if. Property owner A feel like, hey, well, this is not a fair, can they employ their own appraisal to come and then they kinda?
Certainly.
Happy medium?
Certainly, as part of the, uh, litigation process, that's absolutely what they do. Um, if they disagree with what our appraiser says, they can hire their own appraiser and then present that in court. You rarely see that happen ahead of time, depending on the, I, I say ahead of time, ahead of the actual filing of the condemnation, only because. It's expensive to get an appraisal, and a lot of times, you know, the cost of the appraisal may not weigh out to, um. The cost of the property being taken, and I'm not sure in this exact scenario, how much land's actually being taken, but, or being asked to be taken.
Yeah, there's, you know, I think each one of those parcels are different amount.
Yeah.
From an acre to acre and a half or so.
So, the letters already been sent out to them?
No, sir, that tracks were sent today, and then Virginia's office will send those letters out, I think she said sometime this week was her goal.
That project's going on six years old now.
Yeah.
Maybe the first show that that turned on it.
Something wrong.
Lot farther line of road than we were, huh? Well, one thing, you know, I. I guess I have to throw this back then too, that, uh, you know, for a long time, we were talking about going down beside CSA railroad right away, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
And then, at the eleventh hour, they decided, hey, they didn't wanna do it, so we had to kinda regroup and, you know, go to plan B. So, I think that's part of the problem for the delay. Yeah, there was already a preliminary plan created for going down the side of the, the railroad. Cause that's where the lift station and everything got involved and so forth.
So, we agreed on this section for probably over two years now.
Yeah, right when I come on, that's back when it was going on and, so, after we found the railroad, weren't going southwest to. You giving up right away, we had to go a different route, and I think we've moved on pretty good since that time.
Yep. All right, anybody else? Anymore? Thank you, Brandon. I hear motion to adjourn the work session.
Hold us, Chair.
Chair, a second.
Work session's been adjourned, all in favor, I.
Uh.
Hope, we'll take, what, ten minutes?
Well, we got five or five.